Yeah, that's for a reason.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, nine o'clock. Please show me the flag, please. Flag, please. This is my life, other United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Bailey.
Morning.
Morning, Eric.
Have some permits. First one is Michael Del Piero at 2122 Jayhawk. An extension completed. Just want to sign that one. And then the next one is for Jennifer Hawkins at 2283 Osage. It's a three-foot extension.
Okay.
And then the next one is for Ronald Belts at 2140 Valley. And it's a six-foot extension.
Okay. Make a motion, will you approve the application for the installation of culvert extension? First one at 2283 Osage Road, second at 2140 Valley Road.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Oh, there was another one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I do it all the time, dude.
It's...
Cool.
All right. Couple thank yous. First one, want to thank Denise and Bob Duncan. They contacted me last week. They've donated some equipment to the county. They donated two 90-pound jackhammers, a core drilling machine, magnetic drill press, and a bench grinder. Bob had a business, construction business back in the day, and wanted to donate that to us. So, it was very thoughtful of him, and it'll definitely help us out. So, I want to make sure to thank them. Also, want to thank the Crawford County Sheriff's Department. They found one of our street signs located in one of their ditches, returned it to our sheriff's department, and they in return got it back to us. So, we're having a little bit of trouble right now with street signs or road signs disappearing, and just want to throw that out there. The cost of replacing that with the signs and all the fittings and everything that goes with it, and the post is around $125 just for that, and that doesn't include your labor and what have you, so...
That might slow down with the Chiefs replacing.
Well, you have a point there. I thought about that, but then we're going to have basketball season show up, and there's a movie coming out that we have a... Yeah, anyhow. But, in all seriousness, it is a burden on the taxpayers and everyone else when steal those signs.
Do you have a... Sorry, guys. Do you have a guess, like, per year? What are we... You know, is it $5,000 or is it $400? I don't know, as far as dollar now.
I would say you're probably over... Your $5,000 amount could be close, or it could be...
I'd say somewhere 25 to 5.
Yeah.
In the past, so...
It's a problem that not only do they steal just street signs.
Yeah.
Barricades.
Barricades.
Stop signs, yield signs. You know, anything that's out there that they think they want. The other part of that is, we have a lot of problems with people just going out and pushing them over.
Yep.
So, we spend a lot of money just on the sign side of this thing.
Right. So, anyhow, I just wanted to get that out there, that it is a burden, it is a cost. So, if you want... I have had them show up in the back of my truck at home before, so if you, you know, if people have them and want to return them, no question to be asked, just return them. So, we'll put them back up. So, anyhow. Moving on from that, the bridge on 125th and Wagon just to the east. Concrete deck's been cut out, beam's been replaced, concrete's been repoured, and engineer come out and looked at it and suggested we weld a couple more cross braces in there. So, they'll be doing that today. And then we'll have to look at putting guardrail up, and we'll have that project completed and open back up, so...
Isn't that another location you have a problem keeping the signs up?
It was one of them in that area, yeah, so... But, we will have that done hopefully today or tomorrow, and for sure by the end of the week. Also, on 125th, last week, had a box culvert collapse between Poplar and Quail. Replaced the box culvert, and went ahead and inspected all of them through there, and we found a couple more that are on the verge of collapsing. So, we're going to go ahead and dig them up, replace them, and then we will start asphalting. We'll be replacing them this week and start asphalting next week on 125th. So, that gives you kind of a rundown there. Windmills, couple items here. There's 10 of them completely erected or stood. And then also, the September 29th, I know we talked, or I talked last week about closing Highway 39. They're not going to close Highway 39 now. They're going to tear the cranes down and move them across the highway on their trucks. So, there will be no road closing on the 29th on 39 Highway. So, they did want me to pass that along as well. As far as crane crossings, we're having... They have more crews, top-out crews in now, and they're moving the cranes more and more, and they are following our road use agreement. And we go out when they, if we can, make it out on the crane crossings. Had no issues whatsoever on our roads, doing an outstanding job, following the road use agreement and doing exactly what it says. So, other than that, that's kind of all I've got this week. Anything else for me?
I don't have anything.
Lynn reached for his phone. Looks like he may have something.
No, I probably do.
Okay.
District one.
I had a call, no, probably... He was just calling to follow up on that culvert that was plugged on State Line Road.
Okay.
I told him, I says, "It's on the list," but...
Yep.
You have a phone, Eric?
Yeah.
You got a text message or something?
Okay. Okay. Also, forgot, I got a phone call last week from the sheriff. Somewhere between October 5th and 8th, would like to have a meeting with one of you, myself, him, Highway Patrol, and visit about over oversized trucks or equipment running on our road, especially the situation we're having up on Yale Road with the haul truck and what have you. Didn't know if you guys wanted to make a motion for one of you to be able to, or however you want to do that, or if you want to be there. Probably be a good idea, one of you.
Well, I don't mind being there since it's on my district and it's the roads that they're tearing up on Yale Road.
Yeah.
I'm good with the chairman going, but we have signed up on some of the roads in District 2, and no one enforces anything, so...
No, they don't.
There's no reason to post, talking about wasting signs, so...
Okay.
Maybe that'll change.
Maybe that will change. We'll, uh, we'll talk about that.
Well, you know, I know we refer this to law enforcement more once on some of these routes.
Yeah.
Make a motion to allow, Chairman Lynn O'Hara, to attend a meeting with Public Works Director and the sheriff regarding oversized loads.
Second.
Got it. Have we got a date on that yet?
It's somewhere between the 5th and 8th. We're waiting. I believe he's waiting to hear back from KHP or DOT, whichever one's coming.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Just let me know.
Okay, will do. Anything else? All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take a five-minute break, guys. Please. I don't know.
Morning, Susan.
Good morning.
I told you it was on baby detail.
I said it came.
I'm waiting.
Waiting.
Just going at 10:45. I hope they keep her.
North, local.
Kansas City.
Kansas City.
Yeah.
You're not going to be there? You're not going?
If they keep her, I'm running up there, yes.
But what if it's too late? Okay. Are you in this hall?
I haven't done it. I've always done it.
Right now?
02:01.
Yeah, brother. Yeah, I was... And then old administrator want more.
I hear you.
Not more.
He ran off and left you. I kept figuring on the 125th closing of the road that called Horse God Public Works.
Oh, gosh. Oh, police want something bad.
That's what it said on the radio.
No.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
And then about this morning, I went out and they added your life. Close the deck off.
Ah, okay.
And you hear it in the radio, you're like, "Okay, yeah, they closed the dock, and you're welding up the boards and stuff in here."
Yes.
And basically, see you tomorrow.
Yeah. Yes. Yes. Oh, that's not, that's not... I actually liked to call the right folks the first time. Not irritated, people. I know. You find if you were simply making...
As family.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Watch one anyway.
Okay.
We have a trash can. We haven't had one in like, two years, so... Probably got a trash can. Hello, sir.
Morning.
How you doing?
Fine, morning.
Great, you?
Doing well.
Yeah, I got two executive sessions I need to go to.
I don't have that.
I see the news, but it's...
You give it in?
I know, I know.
No, good, no.
Just...
Well, no. No, it's good.
She knows it's slow, she was just trying to be patient. Finally it did. Come on up.
Susan, I have to go.
Yes. So, it did find them, kind of, so...
I like the big school.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe.
Uh, yeah, she's doing good. She looks okay.
Getting it pulled up that minute or two.
Yeah.
Before they actually say the word.
Big step.
Yeah. Yeah, she, I mean... Makes you rather be home, but she's adapted very well and has made some good friends and...
Good.
Of course, she's in that architecture program, so it keeps her really busy.
It'd be... You get it, you know, you know, I got a friend of mine.
Dorm and everything. And they said, "I'm gonna go tell you." She went pit-stick.
Yeah. She gets better cell phones, so it's cheaper. And their cell phone service is 5G at only $10 a month.
Put a brown book before the...
What's wrong with the things you're...
I've done well, considering.
And it's... He's in...
It's...
It's... The problem is, they have to...
They were...
Four phones to make sure they... That, for some reason, over there.
Well, then, we're working on any of that stuff out south.
Yeah.
And then up in the...
How old are you?
Like, Hidden Valley area and stuff.
I'm 47. I mean, I'll be 48.
Hidden Valley, we put the, the... It's kind of like... Off of Tomahawk. Right at 125th. If you stand up on the bank, hold the...
Yeah.
Well, that...
I move, we, uh, I've been agenda to move the county councilor comment in front of Terry Searson.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Justin, you're up.
Good morning, commissioners. I need two executive sessions. One is for attorney-client privilege. There's some just contractual issues, some things happening, transactions, things like that that I need to discuss with you. Probably need about, well, seven minutes planning on that one. Then I have a personal matter non-elected. It is job description, job performance, and possibly additional employee on that one. So, we can come back out and have that discussion about that additional point, because that's not necessarily an executive session. But the other two issues will be a named employee. On that one, I'd like to have Susan involved in that one. So, either you pick your poison, whichever you want first. And that one probably has a little banter in it, so probably 10 minutes on that one.
So, make a motion to go into executive session under KSA 75 dash 4319B2 for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Commissioners and county councillor Meeks be for seven minutes. We'll return here at 9:24.
Here, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Making sure the buttons are pushed.
They were pushed now.
It is.
Make a motion to resume normal session at 9:24. No action.
Here, a second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
Another executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session under KSA 75 dash 4319B1 to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their... Excuse me. To protect their privacy, dealing with job function...
Job description.
Job description.
Job performance.
Job performance. The three commissioners, county councillor Meeks and Susan Bancroft, will go for 10 minutes. We will return here at 9:35.
Here, a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Make a motion to resume normal session at 9:24, no action.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Another executive session.
I make a motion to go into executive session under KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their -- excuse me, to protect their privacy dealing with job function.
Job description.
Job description.
Job performance.
Job performance. The three commissioners, County Councilor Meeks and Susan Bancroft will go for 10 minutes. We will return here at 9:35.
Terry, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Make a motion to resume normal session at 9:45, no action.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I make a motion to move Susan Bancroft and well, should probably, she might want to go.
She wants to ask, do public comments?
Actually, I'm going to amend that. Let's move a public comment in front of her next in our agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Public comment.
We should have been brainstorming while y'all were gone and we didn't, so.
Okay, I would make a motion to move elected officials up in our agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We can give him a few minutes.
We can always take a break.
I think we need to take a break because I think the rest of the stuff will have to have comments afterwards, so. I make a motion, we take out.
Fifteen minutes.
You think that need be fifteen?
What time is Terry supposed to be here? Do you remember yet?
Ten.
Ten o'clock?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I think they need somebody.
I think they need somebody.
Awesome. They lost their first two.
I know they play Olden Drive, but. All these.
An extra idea is.
For us, yes, I don't know if that's the last one, yeah. We won't get through Youngs this year.
Is he so fast?
He is. I always tell those kids when we're here, they're like, start school, we have football season, we're going, basketball, basketball, we're getting this. The discussion's going, we're seeing those three big ones, all we can consider is.
I'm not sure what your goal is.
It's true that they're here this week.
They just got beat by station, so that was. They played Indy, I think, the week before. Did you get, when did they play? They got a nineteen. Fifty-six to six. I'm glad by some good, good right now. You know, I think volleyball, volleyball team, I'm pretty good.
Socrates.
Yeah.
I mean. They're having a better year than that in long time.
Got a few of the tennis players, they're having a good year.
What's that? Right, how about yourself? Yeah, very lucky. I kind of wondered when the, when I was talking to Terry yesterday whether. Whether I could fit in at ten o'clock, now it could be a little later. Friday, which one, Opie?
Did they play Opie right?
Yeah, they got Paige. No, and.
Was it out there?
Yeah, that Opie, yeah. Yeah, they got Hook last night on junior varsity. I don't think he even made his score. Well, I left it at the line after half, forty-six to zero.
What's those words called?
Well, they weren't pleasant. Partially.
Partially be pleasant.
Okay.
It's a bad football year. Every week I have to say, the Tigers lost, the Eagles lost, the Grayhounds lost.
Back in the day, when I was a high school, I had to play all four years. I never undefeated for like three years in a row, and we, it's been a long time. And we only lost by one, one game, I'm sure. Hey, yeah. Well, I got the gray and silver, it's all in the. Seven year chair, he's playing varsity freshman.
Oh, yeah.
He's a lower six player, weighs right in at two hundred pounds.
Katie Fuller.
Uh.
Katie Fuller.
He was, gonna be a wrecking ball, so he's.
Holy, right.
Holy, yes. He keeps it up, he'll be a wrecking ball.
Is he on the line?
He's an outside linebacker, and he plays defense, on special teams too, so he can do it all.
Big boy.
Yeah.
I've seen pictures of him, big kid.
That's how he's dead. He was dead by about six-four.
Let's get the show on the road.
You know, those things I could be doing.
I knew that. I, I had to, we called, because we had a facility ban, I had to read Jesus, I got a lieutenant. I didn't have one where I, I had a big dog being at seven o'clock in the morning, and I missed, he took it. He didn't believe in the meeting, he shouldn't last for like thirty minutes. No, I'm serious. He, he let me laugh, he, I mean, he, it was cut and dried, exactly to the point of what, when he, very efficient in what he did. And Lee and all that, he showed up, it's not easy.
I think any, I think he's open-handed, I think he should, I mean, an hour, two hours, you should be able to take care of your business.
Yeah. Well, the only thing that, that he extended is, is we were going to have a tour address or something, and.
A six-hour secret mission meeting should not be happening.
I, I found a.
I mean, to, in my opinion.
I had a lieutenant that come in, and so I set him up for the meeting, no, not as captain, I thought, really? Said he should have been, and he come back, the first meeting went, he said, start watching, you know, the next meeting we had, he was quite a builder. He goes, the chief saw him, he goes, I go, why did I got away, he goes, you know why? Well, they said they're, Colonel's a nice guy, he was trying to train his captains, he made one up for one. And they were getting ready to tour for us, the exercise was, they were going to give their presentation now, they were going to do this. And then when he got finished with it, he turned to me and said, that's why I'm Mark, tell Howard about it. It's called institutional knowledge, you know? And I think successful X number, that you can lose your career if it was only one. So you better be dotting your i's across your t's. If you were talking about rule of regulation, one of my official duties at military, I have to run the alcohol, I have to company. Twice I got in trouble, getting positive, so canceled. And I was reading regulations, I found a little word, where they want to kick him out, I actually had to go to the full colonel, with the, the captain, the company committee. So we went up there together, and I read, and said, the regulation had highlighted, and I said, now, if you want to make sure that he gets his judicial punishment, this is what he's willing to accept. And the colonel took it, and he said, Colonel, I'm not a lawyer, and he said, I don't like it, I don't like none of it, we're going to do this. And each year, being that captain, up down one side, down another, and then we called the sergeant, and carried the friend flag, and he come in there, and told me, you're very lucky, this is what's happened. Because he had eighteen, nineteen years, and he, he normally, what happened, he had seventeen, eighteen-year-old son, and he goes, I was stupid, and he did, you know, right there with you. And I tried it one time, I mean, coming on stage, just a day or so, so he, a weekend, but.
Clay, you should write a book.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, you, you need to get yourself a little recording device and start telling your stories.
You're right, you need to, in memoirs.
Yeah, you do. You, you do, that's.
You have captain walked out of that meeting, and character, he looks, captain was sweating, he breathed out, and he goes, sorry, Mark, he stood, that was a shoe and all over the place. And he's the captain, who didn't take the run of that.
Okay, it is, just going to suspend the meeting and tie things up.
Where's that bridge at? Hundred forty-fifth, and Eric got the grand old.
So we got the grand.
We talked about that week.
You want to work with?
You still on break, I'll call the mayor.
The bridge is one mile west and two point eight miles north of Pawnee Station.
Two point eight north here.
One west and two point eight north of Pawnee Station.
Pawnee Station. No road number, that's okay.
So how's Bridge fifteen point oh dash U dot two?
Oh, dash what?
Dash U dot two.
Thank you, that's important, yeah. Mr. Mayor, how are you? Good, I'm getting some emails, I don't know if you have any input with the railroad, people's request that the semi, if people keep their, house there on two fortieth, come down to Y. Hall, and stay out of that. School area in the center, I think that's all over you. Okay, that'll make sense.
There's some meetings.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And.
Right, either way. Okay, I'll leave it in your hands, I'll, I'll see you tomorrow.
I've had so many meetings lately, I can't.
Well, we got audits coming up, man, I think it'll make.
I've not gotten anything.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the first and third, Tuesdays, first and third. Oh, yeah, are they scheduled? Yeah, so I have not received anything to say. I was curious, does that affect so many meetings?
I, we can resume the meeting. I did get a text message from Terry. He says the audits are competent, and in the process to be bound, I'll be ready at ten, give me, I told him, give me a time, he said he'd check and let me know, so we can. Take a break until he gets here.
I'll move him to next week.
Huh?
I'll move him to next week.
No, it's getting to October, we'll, we'll get it done today, we need to get it done this month. Ten twenty, he won't be here.
Sure.
Ten twenty. Emails, emails, emails.
Ever do any trout fishing? Ever have?
No.
I just watch them down there. Been at Springs this morning. Had a row in the river. It's like they're catching some fish here.
Really?
I found some fly fishing. One of those relaxing things I could do.
Do you do? You can do that or whatever?
Yeah. Apple lawn, I know my grandsons are better because they started by this tall.
Yeah. Yeah.
But we have fun. See much of Terry?
Not really.
I haven't seen him. I haven't seen him in months. I go visiting.
He'd be down there somewhere.
He's busy though.
Yeah, well, he likes thinking, isn't he? Yeah. No, he, he stays pretty busy.
Yeah, he does.
Mayor. Terry.
These are hot off the press.
Hot off the press. So you're next on the agenda. Uh, maybe we resume normal meeting?
Okay.
Your second.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, sir.
I have about ten copies right now. Bring the rest this afternoon, but I still want a few just to cover it for the meeting. At least make it go back to the county. Didn't see you there. Okay. Running around this morning getting these things bound, but they're all ready to go. I'm Terry with Dilbamber Bolton and I'd like to go over the audit with you this morning. Probably hadn't had a lot of chance to look at it yet, so if something comes up in the next week or so, I'm right down the street. I can be here again if you want me to go into a little more detail about something, but I'll try to explain everything today. As usual, if you've been through this before, there's the bound copy and there's a loose letter. Take out the loose letter and we'll start with the bound copy. Pages one and two is our audit report, and that's where we give our opinion as to whether financial statements fairly present the financial activity of the county. And all the footnotes in there fairly explain information that needs to be explained in connection with the audit. If you look on pages one and two, there's a lot of verbiage there, but the important thing is on page two. Second paragraph from the top. "In our opinion, the financial statement referred to above presents fairly in all material respects the cash balances and the receipts and expenditures for the year then ended. This is an unqualified, unmodified opinion." That's the highest level opinion we can give. That means that based on our testing, the balances there are not materially off. Revenues were received, billed, received or in process of being received as expected, and expenditures paid were for proper expenses of the county. So that's an unmodified opinion. That's a good thing to have. If you look on pages three and four, that's kind of like the overview of all the funds of the county. Beginning of the year, cash balances, receipts, expenditures, end of the year, cash balances. Not a whole lot of differences here between the years. Good thing is you have a nice, healthy general fund, cash balance. Was, was so unexpected in all of my audits this year. Everybody had higher sales tax than the year before. I kind of thought with COVID, people would be staying home and not spending money, but you had good sales tax collections and looks like your delinquent taxes weren't too bad this year, so your property taxes came in. That was a fear also that people would lose their jobs and not be able to pay, but you have good, healthy cash balances in the general fund and most of your funds, as you can see there. The next section then, if you don't mind, just go to page eight, I think. Page nine, I'm sorry. With the audit, we give an opinion about the numbers. We also give an opinion about compliance with Kansas statutes. We're required to, we have a checklist that provided by the state that says we need to make sure the entity has complied with these Kansas statutes. And there's four instances of non-compliance that are on the bottom of page nine. Four bullets there. There is a statute that says once a warrant or a check hasn't cleared after a couple of years, it needs to be canceled and returned to the fund balance. And there's some checks out there that are over two years old, just need to be canceled and added to the fund balance. If you'll skip down to the third bullet, bank reconciliations, this is kind of a repeat. We've had some issues with the bank reconciliations. And that kind of ties in with the outstanding checks. I know you probably recall this from last year, but the reconciliation is done on the computer software and there's a big detailed report that comes out, but there's numbers on it that really don't make much sense. It really doesn't reconcile well. And so I went ahead and tried to reconcile it myself using what I thought the outstanding checks were. And I will say that the bank, cash and bank does not agree with the cash on here. It's off by about seventy-six thousand dollars based on my calculations. Now, lest you think, where is it? I'm glad to point out it's long. That is, you have more money in your bank than that's reflected in here. It would be a lot different if it was the other way around, you know, what happened to that money? But in this case, I'm not as concerned, but it's, you need to reconcile to the bank account. And seventy-six thousand would be nice to add to some fund and probably going to be general fund. But it'd be nice to add that to a fund rather than have it off a year from now, so that's something we need to step, start looking at trying to get that reconciled. Now, back to the second bullet, tax distributions. I've had comments about the tax rule for several years now too, and this year I had trouble tying out the distributions. And when I really dug into it, I saw that one was overstated but then corrected before the end of the year, the motor vehicle taxes, and some of the others had been off for a few years. Now, it's not money missing, it's just money that hadn't been distributed, that was collected but not distributed, and some goes back three or four years. And that might be going back to why I've had trouble the last three or four years reconciling the tax rule, but this year I was off about thirty thousand on the tax rule. Basically what that means is what the reconciliation done by the computer says you collected, disagreed with what was shown as collected and distributed in the current tax fund. Now, that could be the fact that it was distributed in delinquent tax or some other fund, but it was off about thirty thousand. It should be the same. And we need to get to that point somewhere down the road where that reports, and I think that we've, we've had problems with this before, that you have to run the report on a certain date and the backup on that date because you can't go back and do it, backdated, but the point being, there was difficulty in reconciling the tax rule, but thirty-seven thousand out of a ten million dollar rule wasn't that bad, but we should get it closer. Then finally, quarterly statements should be published. I guess they just fell through the cracks this year with a crazy COVID year, maybe, I'm not sure, but they need to be published in the county paper every three months, so that needs to be done. So those are the four statutory findings we have. The next thing I'd like to go to is way, well, then if you go back to page twenty-one, that's the detail of all the funds of the county. The revenues received, expenditures paid compared to budget. And that's where you get the detail for the funds. I'd like you to go way back though to page sixty-five. The last ten pages of the audit this year are new because in 2020, the county received, as you well know, a large grant from the state of Kansas governor's office, the CARES money, the federal money for COVID relief within the county. And because if an entity spends over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal money, you're required to have what's called a single audit. That is, by federal law, I become a federal auditor and I have requirements to the government that I must meet in order to pass the muster, so to speak, for the law. And if you look on page sixty-five, that's your schedule of expenditures of federal award. You can see you've always had a few little grants at the county, but two point nine million was the amount that came in for the benefit of the county and entities within the county, so that triggered the single audit, the additional audit procedures. And that's what the rest of this section is from page sixty-five on or in here solely because of the single federal audit. If you look at pages sixty-six and sixty-seven, these deal with compliance, and there's a lot of verbiage in there, but it's required by the standards, reporting on compliance with federal law, the federal laws that apply to the federal branch you received. And I'll just tell you without reading a whole book to you, the, the pages, that there's no violations of federal law as far as compliance with grant agreements or reporting compliance for the federal law, so no issues with federal compliance. Page sixty-eight and sixty-nine is another report which you also have to give an opinion and on a compliance with internal, general internal controls and compliance. So that's what pages sixty-eight and sixty-nine deals with. In the bottom of page sixty-eight, you can see there's a paragraph there that, where we identify what are considered significant deficiencies in internal controls. And there are two thousand twenty dash oh oh one, oh oh two, oh oh three, and oh oh four. And these are cited in the audit as significant deficiencies in controls. So what are those four issues? Let's swing to page seventy-one. And you can see on page seventy-one, the findings, significant deficiencies. The first is, is the same as last year. That is, we basically help you draft your financial statement. In the perfect world of the, the auditing world where they send their ivory towers on the east coast and pass auditing laws, they say the auder should walk in the door and the, the company you're auditing should hand you pages three on and you audit it. They're supposed to hand you this and then you do the audit. Well, that doesn't happen here. We frequently help prepare the audited financial statements and get them prepared, but if we do actually do that, it's acceptable, it's allowed by the standards, but we have to point out to you that really it's, it's the county's responsibility to do the statements and we audit the statements. This goes back to Enron, back when the auditing firm gave Enron a clean opinion for years. And then they also were being paid, the auditing firm was being paid by Pen, Enron to help them do this financial statements. And so it's considered a potential lack of independence if I'm auditing the work, say, done by someone in my office. And so if I'm And so if I'm auditing the financial statements and also have significant role in preparing them, it's called a weakness in internal controls. I think just about every audit I do has that issue. There's a handful that don't when they have a CPA or someone very experienced in actually preparing the statements. But this is very common, about every one of my audits has this finding. Now, since it's a federal audit, it becomes a more official one because it's in the significant deficiency section of the audit, but it's nothing new from last year. The second one, 2020-002, is really another repeat from last year, the bank reconciliations. Again, we're 76,000 long, so we're not short the money, but we need to identify that and add it back to county funds so it can be used for a good purpose in the county. Nothing really new here on it, so I'll, I'll let that one go. The third one, reconciliation of the tax rule, again, that's a finding I had last year. And it's not off much, just a little, and that's, that's what's kind of frustrating. You know, it's not quite to the penny. So perhaps if these accounts can be distributed from the past that we, I talked about earlier, maybe that can clear this up. But that's another repeat from last year. There is one new one this year, and I think you all know about it. It's 2020-004. As you know, the billings for a while were not done in the landfill, not all the billings. They were caught before the end of the year. They missed a few months. They were identified that weren't being billed. And then they were billed and some were collected by the end of the year, and I think they're still being collected in 2021 when I was here doing the audit. And plus some new culverts within the county. Lots of times the county will have billings for new culverts or desk control or things. But in this case, I didn't see any new covert sold. So they really should be charged unless there's an official decision by the county commissioners to not charge it. And that's you guys' call. I mean, it's certainly an economic development to have a new covert usually means there's a new house, but it's you guys' call on that. So I think it's just a matter of there was a transition in oversight and just make sure you oversee those billings going forward. But that is a new finding from last year. The prior three were in last year. This is a new one. Now, before we go to the last page, 75, I want to make sure if there's any questions about the four findings or the violation of statutes or the four findings. Anything not clear? Any questions about them?
So you've been doing these audits for quite a while. You've kind of identified some of those went on last year. Do you have, have any, any idea how long it's been going on?
With the?
With the findings on reconciliation?
Oh, that's, yeah, that's been three or four years. I mean, you guys, you can get last year's loose. Now, this year it's actually in the bound audit because it's the federal audit and we have to actually cite it within the audit. You go to the last three or four years, this letter, the same thing's in there. So it's, you can grab the last few years, it'll be there. So it's been a continuing thing. The software people, perhaps they can come in and help get it. I know at one time they did come in and then COVID hit and then they pulled off and, but we need to get it cleaned up. Now, let me say you need to get it cleaned up because this fact of the federal audit. That is, you, you got another grant this year, and I forget how many millions you got. How much did Bourbon get?
2.9.
Yeah. And that's going, well, next year, I mean, 2021.
1445.
Yeah, it's a little more than last year. You're going to have to have another single audit. And I don't know, I've seen it go several ways. Sometimes the feds, if they see a finding, they say, oh, that's just a finding, let it go. But if you come back the next year and you have the same finding, they can get a little more upset about it, you know, if you have two straight years. So since you actually have this as an official finding, reportable to the federal government, we should do all we can not to have this finding next year. Next year being 2021 audit. Now, I don't know if, I know that federal agencies are not quite as on top of things as they were with COVID. They're really behind in monitoring things. But I think we should try not to have them next year, the findings. The preparation of financial statement is fine. They, they accept that, they know that's an issue with preparing financials, but the reconciliation tax rule and the billings, we need to make sure they're cleaned up next year. Technically, they can say, we're not giving you more federal money until you clean this up. Now, I don't think that would happen unless you had a couple of years or constant years of that happening.
Well, we've had three or four, is that what you're saying?
Right. And you continue to report.
It seems like we've had continuous.
Right. The last few weren't officially reported to the federal government. Now that they see it officially reported, they will want you to clean it up. And that's the last part of this audit that I was going to hit next after we discuss this. You have to have what's called a corrective action plan. What's the county officially going to do to correct this so we don't have it in the future? And that's, this last page is 75. I think it's very important that we see this and make steps to make this happen because you don't want to have it two years in a row. You really don't. And I think you should be able to get it cleaned up. So that's the corrective action plan, drafting financial statements. I don't think there's anything you have to do at this time, but monitor the situation. I think you've hired Susan now to help with the numbers. That's going to, and if the numbers are clean next year when I come back, I, I could probably take this one off. I mean, if you rely on me to give you your numbers, that's a weakness. But if next year you guys can get the numbers from Susan and rely on him, I can take that one off. So this is a matter of monitoring and just making sure we can get clean numbers going forward. The bank recs and the tax rule, that's just going to be a matter of doing it. And I don't, like I said, I worked it out. We're long, we're not short, which is encouraging, but still, let's clean it up and identify that money and give it back to the county to spend. So unless you have any questions about the bound audit, we'll go to the loose letter.
Okay.
But I want to make sure you guys are all on board, especially that corrective action plan. That's going to be important. I think part of the corrective action plan is you've already taken steps with hiring Susan after the end of the year to monitor some of the numbers. So that will certainly help. The loose letter is a letter I've issued every year, last 30 years, 20 years. And I have to give issues and internal control issues. And basically the first, well, the public works billing is a new one that we have on the top of page two. And here we're going to cite the weaknesses in internal controls, significant deficiencies. Again, the public works billing, just oversight. We have the transition cleaned up now, person in charge and looking it all over. And I don't think that's going to be a repeat, but it's something I had to cite in the audit. And the next three are basically repeats from last year. Bank recs, tax rule, and financial statements. So try to, we'll try to clean those up with the corrective action plan that's in the audit. But I'm required to give you this letter, even if it wasn't a federal audit, I'm required to give you this letter, which you've received every year, last three years, last 10 years, 15 years. The rest of it, just some comments. I'll let you look through it. I think it's all pretty much straightforward from last year, same as last year. The, I had disagreements with management on page five, I'm supposed to tell you. Starting on page, the end of it, I have to attach the journal entries so you guys know how many adjustments I made so you can see things I did. But the rest of the verbiage is pretty straightforward and comparable to last year. But if you have any questions about that, I know you probably hadn't had a chance to go through it in detail. I'll be glad to address it today or maybe in a future meeting. And again, I am five, 10 minutes away, so I can come to another meeting later on if you have a chance to digest this. I mean, I'm sure you haven't read it from the cover to cover.
I would say that most times you have a letter, needs to be addressed.
Certainly, and especially as it's in the last page of the audit, the corrective action plan. This is your official response, that we will take this corrective action. So it's important that we do that. And it's important to clear up the findings, that we don't have them in the future.
What are journal, these journal entries at the end of your letter?
Uh huh.
What, what is that again?
Oh, let me switch them here. There's various kinds that we've had to make just to clean up posting errors in the records. The first one, the commissioners, at the end of the year, always ask that we transfer money into a reserve fund. For example, the appraisers have an equipment reserve and the election has an election reserve to be used for appraisers' equipment, election equipment. And it's, we wait till after the audit to see how much cash and how much budget you have available to transfer it without hurting the next year's budget. So that's why that's always done late. It's mainly the G1 is to transfer money into reserve funds. The second one is just required to transfer money in the motor vehicle fund into the general fund at the end of the year. And that's what A1 is, just this required transfer by the statutes. And you see I have, don't, don't post this unless, if you've already posted it, because you don't want to post it twice. But that's what this A1 is. Okay, A1 was last year's motor vehicle. A2 is this year's. Last year it didn't get posted, so. And then the rest are just reclassifications. For example, some things may be code to other, whereas I break it out, just call it a grant or give it more detail rather than miscellaneous. Lots of times it's easier just to code something miscellaneous, but I like to kind of give a little more detail than just miscellaneous. For example, we didn't have very much sheriff fees identified, and so I broke it out of miscellaneous and put it in an actual line item or jail fees or whatever it is. So that's what these, the resties are, just reclassification adjustments to show things a little more detail than what they are in.
Got you.
Now, I won't tell you, there's some places that have literally no, no journal entries. Some places are audit, but this is one of the bigger audits. You know, Bourbon County has millions of dollars going through it in years, so you maybe expect more adjustments. But I have some audits, I just did one two weeks ago. I had one $5,000 adjustment, just reclassification. So it's not, you don't have to have reclassifications, and there are a few for you. But again, I think with more monitoring going on, I think you'll, won't have that problem as much going forward. I think Susan looks at the numbers every month and makes your journal entries. I think some years I've had more than this, frankly. I think you'd already made a few before I got here.
Susan, when you worked on this prior to the audit or during the audit on cleaning up journal entries?
Yes. I did quite a few. It got to a point where we were down to time. I had to have information for the, to do the budget. So wasn't able, I wasn't able to look at the reconciliations.
So again, unless there's any specific questions now, I'll, I'll let you go home and reread this book from cover to cover. And again, if you have any more questions that pop up and, or if you have any questions pop up, you can call me at this number, bottom of the page, our phone number. I'll be here all next week. But if you want me to come back, I can use.
When are you getting your cell phone?
Before the end of the year. I've got to, Sprint died, so I've got to get it. You want to see mine? Look at this thing. This thing is.
Well, it's probably antique.
It is, I think I ran over it in the parking lot once. It's kind of.
Army surplus.
Hey, it works. But I've got to get a new one because it dies.
Susan, you got any questions?
Comments?
I have some comments. You know, my biggest concern is, is when we start applying for grants and things like that, they always ask for your audited financial statements. So that would be a concern. The other thing that we, we will need to look at is there, there are certain reports that we need to be pulling from the system that I don't think you are getting as a governing body. That probably needs to be presented every month after reconciliations are created. And there's a process that we can put in place so that you know, because if, if things aren't being done timely, you're making decisions, financial decisions about purchases and you could be creating violations for yourself if things are not done timely. And what I mean by that is there could be cash violations, there could be budget violations because you really, if, if, if things aren't being reconciled monthly, you don't really know if they have been input into the system yet. And so you don't have accurate numbers to, to make decisions on. And so that's probably my biggest concern is to, for you to be making decisions, you need to have very accurate information. Would you agree with that, Terry?
Absolutely, Susan, absolutely. In fact, you had that issue a couple of years ago. Remember, Jim, you thought you had all that budget available, but there was a posting error and at the end of the year, it hurts, we had negative cash balance at the end of the year because you thought you had a budget. So no, absolutely. And the other thing is that now, this federal audit takes things to a different level because with the federal audit, these findings are actually an official part of the audit, in the back of the audit. It wasn't the loose letter, which is still an important part, but not attached to the audit. But with it being a federal audit, we're required to actually cite it within the actual audit. And she's right, if you send financial statements to granters, they're going to see that. And they're going to say, oh, what's going on here? Maybe I don't want to give you a grant. So that's why it's important to clean that up so that next year.
So it's also going to apply to our bond rating because they're asking for, or?
Well, your cash position is in good shape. They, they won't like that there's findings. But the one thing that I saw that was reoccurring is, and this is basic accounting for governmental entities, is, is when we have an expenditure, it needs to go in an expense line, not in a revenue line. Because when it's in a revenue line, you are understating your expenses and understating your revenue also. So your revenue needs to come into a revenue line and your expenses need to go out of an expense line because what is happening is a lot of times we're putting revenue in and then we're expensing out of a revenue account. Well, at the end of the year, he has to go in and make all these adjustments. And so, and that is just basic accounting procedures for government accounting. And so, and we saw a lot of that going on. And so those were a lot of the things that I was fixing, trying to fix at the end of the year to get you guys caught up to speed and found some, but not all, as that was noted in the audit.
I think Jim had some problems with cash flow and knowing what his budget was for, for a number of years.
We did.
I don't know, we've been, I've been here seven years and, and I think we worked together every year on this, haven't we?
Well, we, it was always a struggle to really just get to pinpoint where we was at, but maybe that's not unusual in the county process. Maybe it's, is, I don't know. But yeah, we had times, it was difficult to operate, public works, you know, a multimillion dollar entity for us, I was concerned, and, you know, 35 employees. You had to know the funding that you had, but I'm confident with Susan and Patty working together, we're going to get past that. So we hope.
Well, you talk about corrective action, and the fact of the matter is, is we as county commissioners, I mean, let's be realistic, we don't have much control over that.
And neither do I.
Neither does Susan.
I'm just building relationships.
And not to, Patty, you're in here, I'm not going to, I mean, I'm not going to.
Right. And I've got some, I've got some information.
And I've got some, I've got some information here, things I've been working on and stuff. I don't want to talk to you guys.
Okay. So, so I mean, at the end of the day, all we can ask is, Patty-
I want to work with you guys. I've always wanted to work with you guys. I want an open door policy. I feel like I can come in and, you know, address things with you guys, okay? Because I think that's important as a county, that we all work together. And I don't feel like we have a lot of that, and I'm sorry. But I wanted to let you know, I've got a new employee, which I think you're all familiar with, that has plenty of experience, and I'm really lucky there. It won't be something I can keep forever, but for right now, Rhonda's in there. We're going through, we're getting the bank statements reconciled by the end of this month, if not by the middle of next month, we will have it all caught up and done. That will be taken care of. October 1st is a day that I've set aside, that I'm doing nothing but work on the tax rule. That's it. Because, and what happened was last year, in February, CIC come in, we were all set up. We were gonna get this stuff straightened out and everything. And COVID hit. And this last year, I have been without employees. We have been busier than ever, as you can tell by the sales tax. A lot of that sales tax comes through our office because of new vehicles. Everybody bought a new vehicle, traded three or four times last year. It's been crazy. I'm still struggling with employees. I need that employee. I gave up a few years ago. I think Lynn, you were the only one here when I gave up that employee. And I come in here and I was gonna do great things and I thought I could get by with it. And I had a fully experienced office then. And I was putting in the time, working, you know, on a lot of this stuff, picking up a lot of stuff that, you know, another employee had done before, and we could do that. But since then, I've lost the experienced employees. I can't operate with what I'm operating on. I need that employee. And when I gave that up, you agreed, this was a trial thing, to see if it would work and that I could still, that's when we had the employee freeze on. I could hire that employee back if I needed it. Well, ever since then, every time I've tried to come in and hire employee back, it's been a no.
Was it in your budget this year?
Huh? No, it's still, I tried to put it in there, but it's my understanding it did not come through on the budget.
Did you see it?
The additional employee back?
I think, I think anything that you requested was put in.
Okay, okay. Yes, okay. Yes, because I was, okay, because I was requesting that. And if that, and right now, I'm down to where I have three employees in there. Two of them are new. I mean, it's, it's a schedule, it's a struggle just doing the everyday processing. And that's what I got into last year. And that's why this suffered last year, I'll be honest with you. Because I was trying just to get the people out of the office. We were taking millions of phone calls. We were shorthanded and trying to process the taxes. I probably put in 90% of the taxes last year during December myself. Because we were so shorthanded, we were closed down for COVID. Last year was a train wreck. I'm sorry. You know, and I'm not proud of it, but you know, this year, I'm wanting to move forward. Um, we're working on voiding the past checks. We want to get those out of the way. Uh, I need to figure out a way to retain employees. Because last year, I lost three employees to other departments in the county. And every one of them, where they went, they got more money. You know, so it's hard for me sitting in there paying probably the minimum wage in the county for a full-time employee for a very stressful job. It's a skilled job. I can't just hire somebody off the street and put them at the front desk and say, here, do this, because there's a million different things to learn. And I've, you know, anytime you, commissioners want to come in, set, see what we do, you know, it's not easy. It's stressful. They get overwhelmed, they leave. They could, and right now, they can go just anywhere for more money and a lot less stress.
So what does the state pay your employees for? The license tag renewals? I mean, they're the ones, they're the ones that pay that fund or that salary.
Right. And I got three of the, them, of my employees coming out of that fund. Yes. But you guys are the ones-
Are they the ones that set the wages?
No, you guys are the ones that set the wages, because my employees make the same as the one in the deeds office and the one in the, or the ones in the clerk's office, except for the ones that got the, you know, payrolls. But you know, this is all stuff that I want to work with, you know. I'm not proud of this at all. But like I said, this last year, I've spent my whole life here, this last year. I, I really have. I mean, I've been here Saturdays, Sundays, and I know that's my job. I'm not complaining after hours and stuff. But you know, I want to work with you guys and, you know.
I hope you're aware that Susan had a great idea last week. We're going to meet with all department heads, elected officials, and talk about salaries.
Okay.
So that's coming up pretty quick.
Anything I can work with everybody on, I'm more than glad to. That's what, it's a big problem that, you know, you guys talk about my department and what's going on without me involved. Or you talk about the clerk's department or the other departments. Call us in. We're the ones that know what's going on there. We can tell you the problems, you know. I'm asking for help. Does anybody have any questions for me? Because-
Well, I know we need to, our departments need to be working with Susan, because she is-
Sure.
The financial director, and she has the experience to help-
Definitely. I'm up for anything. Any suggestions she has, anything, you know, we can do. You know, I, that's, I'm always ready to learn and to work on this.
Do you got any quick comments, Clifton?
No, we just have to get it fixed. I mean, if it's gonna affect our grants, then-
Sure, definitely. No, this is not something, yes.
We have millions of dollars in danger.
Right. I understand. And-
And my question was, again, we put in four, for, for bonds, again. And we get our S and P rating. They do ask for this. They ask for this document. And they will be asking the questions. Especially when they see that there's repeat stuff going on. So we have to be careful.
Sure, I understand. And that, that, you know, and that's what I want to do. I want to get it cleaned up. And you know, this is not acceptable to me either. But I need help to do it, because I need the employees. I can't do it with what I'm doing now. Because I had, something has to suffer. And like I said, last year, unfortunately, the wrong thing suffered, because I was doing what was coming in the door, if the phone was ringing, everything. Well, this year, you're gonna have people, the public complaining, because when they come in here to the office, I'm working on something else, Rhonda's working on something else, you know, because I've got to have somebody that can do the behind-the-scenes stuff too. You know, our only job's not the automobile. And so without the extra employee, that suffers.
And we're also working, Susan's working right now temporarily as our HR director. So we're doing exit interviews, and she's also on, on the team to hire new employees.
Good, good.
Susan, would it be a great, good ideal for us to meet in 30 days and you and Patty tell us how we're moving forward to clear these deficiencies up, or we have, make sure we have a plan. We're on the same page, because these need to go away for our grants and everything else. So I'd like to see a group meeting, work session.
We're early into October, so we're way behind that.
I understand. But we can meet in a few weeks, and between the two of you, you can explain to us how we're gonna fix them.
And any suggestions you have, you look at the stuff, or if you question something, like I said, I, I want to learn, I want, you know, because there's certain things in my office that are my strong points, and there's certain things I'm weak at, and I want to get stronger at everything. So, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Patty.
Thank you, Terry. I'll be back with some more. There's, there's like 10 more. I'll bring them back.
Okay, thanks, Terry. I appreciate it.
You have a good, good day. Have you too, sir. Can't believe it's October.
Halloween coming up, I guess.
Thank you.
What happened to the pier, right?
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Did they keep her? Did they keep her, your grant, your daughter?
You got any more comments, Susan? You done? Can make sure it's having comments.
No, I think we're heading in the right direction between Susan and Patty. We all work together. It's a work session, see if we can resolve some of these issues. And we have to, we don't have a choice, so.
I know.
One way or the other, we gotta resolve them.
I know. I worked for Susan when she first came in to, to fix some of these problems. But Susan ran out of time.
Oh, I'm sure she did.
We had to stop what we were doing, so the audit could start.
I understand.
Or finish, one of the two.
And, and there's a certain, there's a fine line that I walk, because I really am not, I'm here to just kind of point out errors or deficiencies. Um, I can't, I truly should not be in there making journal entry, entries. I mean, that is, that is, that is the treasurer's job. Um, but I have, I have offered to help, because I am familiar with CIC. I think my biggest concern is, is it's October, and so we're probably gonna have to go back to January and start evaluating again to see if we have truly reconciled. Um, so, but we can get, we can get a plan in place to make that work.
Thank you.
Well, I think we have a plan in place to actually get this fixed. Go ahead.
Well, it's just repeat, repeat, repeat over and over.
Yes.
It's been three to four, it's four years over and over now.
Oh, more than that.
Um, that, to, I mean, it's, if it's not, I mean, of course, we don't have much power, but it's got to be fixed. This is not correct.
It's gotta be fixed.
And it is. And I know, and I'll just, since Jim and I worked so close together over the years, we struggled through the last few years.
It's tough.
You know, and then when you have to, to go in and say in August, stop spending, because we don't know where we're at. Well, it, it makes it difficult. So I'm really excited to get this, get this done.
I am too.
You know, where, where our new people can actually get in and do what they need to do.
Yeah, on all fairness to the department heads and elected officials, they need to have a true reporting system for their budgets to understand. For Eric, one of them, can I move forward with this road program or not? Do I have to stop? And a lot of times, we stopped just because we didn't know. So we had to.
And I will say that, um, I've looked at some of the reports that were given to the department heads in the past, and those are not good reports. They do not give you enough information. Um, there are two very specific reports that I would like to implement, um, giving to the department heads that give you all the detail of what's happened in every account. And every department head should go through those with a fine tooth comb. Because if you've got a revenue, if you've got money coming into, a revenue coming into an expense line, that's a problem. There needs to be a journal entry created, because that's not where it belongs.
And, you had that before?
And that's where I really need to sit down with all the department heads and say, this is what you need to be looking for.
And either part of the report, or at least attached to the report, expenditures and cash.
Yes. The, um, there is one report called an account status listing. And that gives you, at the very top of the report, it gives you a breakdown of your cash. And then it gives you your budgeted line items, and then it tells you where are, where you are for the year. And none of those reports were ever given to department heads. So it, it's an easy fix to, to do that part of it. But again, if, if things are not being reconciled monthly, and you know, we have accurate numbers to work off of, that's, that's the concern, because you could have budget violations. Um, you can have, you would probably more likely have a cash violation than a budget violation. But the cash violation is just as, I mean, it's a sighting in, in an audit.
As Terry mentioned, two to three years ago, we thought we had money in there. We continued the road program, and we didn't have it.
No, you didn't. We had, we, we, we worked to squeeze every penny out of every account.
And I'll tell you, we had to, we had to do the, we had to move some things around this year too, just to make, make ends meet and make sure that we were following all of our cash. Yeah. Yep. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Clifton?
I'm good.
Okay. I don't have anything.
I don't have anything. Making motions. Are you in the meeting?
A second.
Any discussion? Hold a favor.
All right.
Bye.